Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with a call the roll, please, and establish your form.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor Protem Gata. If you have the land acknowledgement in front of you, would you mind leading us in the land acknowledgement and then the pledge of allegiance?
Mayor, if I could pass on today, I've got, I've got one hand busy here.
I see. You've got your, your, your hands full. I understand. No, no problem. How about Councilmember Rick Jennings?
Mayor, do I have the land acknowledgement in front of me?
It should be in your binder if it is not.
Mayor, I got you. You ready?
You got it. Vice Mayor, go right ahead.
Okay.
You do that, and I'll do the pledge.
All right, Rick. That sounds like a good deal. So everybody, please rise for the land acknowledgement. All right, we're rising for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Wintun peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both, Vice Mayor and Councilmember, for leading us this afternoon. Members, we have one item on the discretion calendar, and it's an item that Councilmember Chenier, I know, erased, I think it was last week. I know there have been discussions, good discussions, I hear back and forth. Me and Councilmember Chenier and, and our Housing Authority, Councilmember Chenier, do you want to kick this off?
Actually, if we could ask LaShelle maybe to give us a little bit of background and context, and then she and I can tag team a little bit on the discussions that we've had.
Very good. Go ahead, please, Ms. Dusha.
That's great. So we have a brief PowerPoint presentation. Mike Taylor, who is on the line, will do that, and then we can open it up for discussion. Mike, are you on the line?
Sorry, I just don't need it. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go ahead and share my screen then and launch into this PowerPoint. All right, thanks, Mayor and Mr. Mayor and City Council people. My name is Mike Taylor. I'm the Real Estate and Construction Director here at SHRA. And I've got a three-page quick presentation here on the ten vacant lots that we have in Oak Park and their development status. So quick background, as you saw in the staff report, these ten lots are not going to be developed by Del Paso Homes, who we entered into a DDA with back in 2018, as they've indicated that they will not be able to complete this project after all. Incidentally, we have not transferred ownership to Del Paso Homes yet, so the Housing Authority is still the owner of all ten of these lots. So on the screen are two maps indicating the locations of these lots. There are three south of Broadway, which is the left-hand map, and seven lots north of Broadway. The tables on these maps show the lot sizes and the maximum width of the building footprint, mainly based on the side setbacks. Corner lots, including lots on alleys, have larger side setbacks, so their envelopes get smaller. Seven of the lots, seven of these total lots can accommodate a house at least twenty-five feet wide. And that's the width of the house that we're currently planning for. The remaining three lots, though, must have narrow warehouses designed for them. Slide two, we have a couple of options for development that I want to go over. So one would be for SHRA to remain as the developer. As you know, the agency has a history of acting as developer of single-family lots. In our Welcome Home Program, seventy-one of that program, seventy-six homes have been rehabilitated and sold to first-time low-income home buyers. Now, prior to that, we have the Five H Program and Section Thirty-two, where we did a couple of hundred more. So we've been doing this for a while, of course. And in that, or all of those programs, actually, sales proceeds from the various blocks of homes that we bid out were used to fund subsequent phases of construction. Our construction department also acts as the developer of the public housing stock, including most recently the RAD Program, where entire housing complexes are renovated. Construction documents for, for the twenty-five-foot-wide home are currently being prepared by the same architect that Del Paso Homes used for their lots in Del Paso Heights. Three of those lots are completed and, and sold, and one more yet to build. So this project in Oak Park, we're planning to do in three phases. Phase one would be completed using agency's cash reserves as sort of seed money. And then the sales proceeds from those first three homes would be used to fund phase two. Then the proceeds from phase two would be used to fund phase three. We're expecting phase one to be completed by the end of this year, and phase two by the end of next year, with the final phase completed at the end of 2024. Option two would be for SHRA to transfer the property to another developer. We also regularly work with outside developers on affordable housing projects, as you know, some of which have occurred on agency land, such as Marisol Village, most notably. So we would release an RFP to developers again, and it would take approximately three months to select a developer through the RFP process, like this procurement, review, proposals, and, and such. And then we'd enter into a DDA with the selected developer. And that process would take approximately four to six months to prepare and, and fully execute. So with that model, we're expecting completion to be completed as early as 2024, depending on the developer and their proposal. So, yeah, it kind of depends on, on the developer, I think. And then finally, the last slide is financial considerations. One of the most notable things about this program is that we have a maximum affordable sales price. And for a four-bedroom house, which is what this twenty-five-foot-wide house that we're planning for, that, that price cannot exceed $479,845. And that, that price is calculated based on HUD's income limits, based on family size, as well as other factors like interest rates, taxes, et cetera. Also, home buyers cannot make more than 110% of area median income for these lots. So therefore, the cost of building affordable housing on these lots exceeds the maximum sales price, because currently we're seeing construction costs in the neighborhood of $300 a square foot, give or take, but that's kind of an average that we're seeing now, believe it or not. It's, it's kind of crazy right now. So our four-bedroom house would cost at least $550,000 to build. So a subsidy would be required to complete the homes to cover the gap, regardless of which development option is used. So if the, again, if the agency's the developer, our cash reserves will fund phase one and so on. If an outside developer is used, then they would require the developer fee and other equity to make the project feasible. So that's it in a nutshell. That ends my presentation. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Either LaShelle or Jay, you would take it from here?
Yeah. Or LaShelle, do you want to add anything to that?
Um, no, I'll, I'll let you go ahead.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. So we had a very good conversation with LaShelle and Christine about this. The priorities, this has been going on for a long time. We understand the market has fluctuated and costs today are ridiculously high. But, you know, I think bottom line is a few things for the, for SHRA. One is it would cost them at least $100,000 per unit. And I, I do want to make one point that three of the lots are large enough to have two dwellings on them, or two houses, or a house and an ADU. So we're talking about the potential of thirteen houses here, rather than just the ten. So we, so one thing is it's going to cost them at least a hundred, if not more, per facility to build. So taking a loss on each one is going to extend the time. What we talked about was option two. I'm sorry, the other thing is just, as I said a couple meetings ago, we, we've been asking SHRA to do a lot of stuff. There's, I don't think there are capacity issues. I know they could get it done. But I think if we look at where their time is most valuable, it may be in other things, in a relatively small project like this. If this were 200 units, we'd be having a whole different conversation, but it's, it's thirteen units as we see it. So I want to actually make a motion here that we go with option two, that we allow or have SHRA do an RFP. A few things that I'll come back to, but I do want to note that we've had conversations with, with the Oak Park Neighborhood Association Board, who's very interested in having some local developers potentially do some of the homes. And I want to say that I'm not sure that we, we don't want ten developers, but we may have more than one to do it. We've also had and gotten some letters, as I'm sure you all have, from the, the Land Trust. They, I don't believe, have capacity to actually build houses, but would have to partner with an affordable housing developer, which would be fine. So if we go out with an RFP, put some parameters around it that the houses have to be developed within three years, so fast as, as fast as possible is one thing. And, and having more than one developer may facilitate that as well, that we can get, you know, side by side, two people doing, you know, five or eight, eight of the units, that we can go as low as thirty to eighty percent AMI. So it would be more affordable than what, what we would be able to do if SHRA was developing it. That we use, SHRA, what LaShelle told me, has put aside 1.5 million, that we use that as a subsidy to, to see what we need to do on it. And, again, that it doesn't have to be more than one developer. And if SHRA has other criteria they would like to put in, which I'm sure they do, then, then we would go for that. So if, if there's local developers that want to do it, that's great. If there are local folks that want to partner with affordable housing developers, that's great. And if there are local, the Land Trust wants to do that and partner with an organization with more capacity, that's great, too. And then we can make some decisions and hopefully get going. So that would be my motion.
Mayor, I'd like to second the motion, but with a caveat, if that's okay, Councilmember, that the, we really because I want to talk more about the Land Trust's proposals. I'm going to keep my hand up after we do public comments, so I can explain more about where I'm coming from. But I really want to make sure that we prioritize applicants that are going to provide the deepest affordability for the longest amount of time.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And also, I want to prioritize, I know Habitat is one organization that's interested, that can do it very well, but I want to prioritize Oak Park residents being able to buy these homes as well.
Absolutely. And then I'll keep my hand up for the discussion after public comment, but happy to second that. Thanks, Councilmembers.
This has been moved and seconded. Why, why don't we open it up for public testimony? How many people do we have signed up to speak?
Mayor, I have nine people signed up to speak.
Okay.
The first one is PJ.
Yes, hi. I would support option two. If we want to address homelessness in a meaningful way, we have to ensure communities remain affordable. We do that by moving parcels like those described into a community trust with a requirement of partnership with a nonprofit to ensure those parcels are developed thoughtfully and in an effort to avoid displacement and gentrification, which only leads to more homelessness as people are pushed from their neighborhoods, as housing prices go up, and historical disenfranchisement of communities is once again compounded. Please transfer ten of the vacant lots to the community land trust. This would ensure stewardship of land needed for communities at risk of displacement and can be developed in a community-centered way by the land trust. It is crucial that public lands such as this move back into the hands of communities who have historically been harmed and continue to be harmed by both public and private actions. A community-centered approach by the land trust is what is needed to generate sustainable community benefits and affordability for the greatest number of people. These types of partnerships have been successful in cities and counties across California, and it's time we had a similar vision in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Adro Okoro.
Hi, thank you. Yes, my name is Adro Okoro. I'm the Policy Director for the Sacramento Housing Alliance. The city has been engaged with the community in recent efforts to bring more affordable housing to our region and mitigate displacement. Supporting the community land trust is the next major step needed to bring solutions that will not only provide affordable housing, but community ownership and long-term generational wealth. The Sacramento Housing Alliance strongly supports the Sacramento Community Land Trust in acquiring these up to ten parcels of vacant Oak Park land and donating them into the trust with the requirement, as mentioned, to partner with a nonprofit developer to build the structures, allowing these parcels of land situated in this formerly redlined and disinvested community to retain community ownership and allow more existing residents to enjoy the benefits of a revitalized community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Brianna Lowry.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Brianna Lowry, and I am Oak Park resident. I'm calling in today in support of the available Oak Park lots being transferred to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento. Habitat Homes provide long-term affordability for the community. They provide low-income families, the majority of whom are people of color, with the opportunity to build equity through homeownership. They are energy-efficient homes that are all-electric and EV-ready. When they're built, they help build equity for other homes in the neighborhood because it does help increase the property values of the homes around them. Habitat for Humanity has built or repaired over three hundred homes for low-income families and seniors. The majority of those projects have been in the Oak Park community where I live. The proof that Habitat's program works and that they can make the best use of those lots is evident with the hundreds of individuals whose lives Habitat has changed in my Oak Park community and in every beautiful home. Habitat for Humanity has been serving our community for thirty-six years, and as an Oak Park resident, they're an organization with the history, the staff, the community's support, and the ability to do the work. Habitat is an organization that does what they say they're going to do always. Thank you for the opportunity to call in today in support of Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daphne.
Thank you, Council. I would like for you to consider those ten lots as tiny home site lots for homeless development with local developers that we have here in the area. That is an ideal opportunity for homeownership options with individuals that are making revenue less than $15 an hour. You could put several homes on each of those lots, and it would be helpful if you allow the community within the area to develop something like that. There are several homeowners that are close by to the lots that are identified in Oak Park, and I think it should be an opportunity that's given to the Oak Park community directly as opposed to external nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Leah Miller.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Leah Miller. I'm the President and CEO at Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento. And as an affordable housing developer with thirty-six years of history successfully building and repairing more than three hundred homes in Sacramento, the majority of which have been in Oak Park, we're calling in with support of option two before the City Council today. And we're looking forward to the opportunity to respond via RFP to acquire some or all of the currently available lots for the development of affordable homeownership opportunities. We have looked at the available lots and with resources are confident in our ability and in our capacity to successfully develop one, and in some cases where the lots are larger, more than one lot per unit within three years. Perspective Habitat homeowners meet criteria that includes demonstrating a compelling need for housing, a capacity to pay an affordable mortgage, a willingness to partner and put in over $500 of sweat equity, helping to build their home and other Habitat homes. And qualified applicants earn between thirty to eighty percent of AMI. Combined with the use of volunteers, the sweat equity component of our program provides Habitat a Safe Act exemption, eliminating the requirement to pay prevailing wage, which enables us to stretch government and fundraising dollars further than other developers and ultimately build for less. The homes that Habitat builds run between two hundred and five, two hundred, two hundred, $250,000. Homes are sold to buyers with a thirty-year zero-interest equivalent mortgage. Habitat is both a builder and the mortgage lender in most cases, and the homes that we build have a long-term deed restriction for affordability. Thank you so much for the opportunity to call in today and express our support for option number two. We look forward to the opportunity of partnership with the City of Sacramento to develop greatly needed affordable homeownership opportunities in Oak Park.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ahmed Naghoub.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm calling in to support option two in the transfer of all of these parcels up to, up to all ten of these parcels to the community land trust to partner with a developer. The community land trust is incredibly suited to ensure that not only are these affordable homes, but ones that are used in the best way for the community involving Oak Park neighborhoods. Our membership are very, very much involved in the process of selecting parcels and identifying where we will be expanding. And this is a great opportunity for us to invest in the land trust going forward as an opportunity for our communities to continue keeping housing affordable in perpetuity. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Erica J.
Hi, thank you. I just want to express, so I'm an Oak Park resident, and I want to express that I support option two. I also want to express, though, that my concern around the RFP process with the Aggie Square Development and there was a RFP that was put out, and that property between Ninth and Tenth on Stockton Boulevard was purchased by not an affordable housing developer. And there was an affordable housing developer that did put in an RFP, and we would have had elderly senior living there that was affordable, which is really needed right now. And we don't, we're not going to have that. And so my concern around the art, it's really around the RFP process and how that's going to be decided. And I want to see that mo, most, if not all of these homes go to the community land trust. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Cassandra Jennings.
Thank you. This is Cassandra Jennings, President and CEO of St. Hope. And I'm really calling in support of option one. And I have also talked to residents in some of the organizations, I'm not speaking for them, but in the certain desire to expeditiously stay the course and bring homeownership to Oak Park. I think that by, after several years, and I know the Del Paso Heights Group, DPH, if they could have done it, they would have. And now we find ourselves after several years of planning that they're unable to do it, and we want to change the course. I am encouraging you to stay the course. I was on Fourth Avenue and saw a house at seventeen hundred square feet that's selling for $635,000. I applaud the city and SHRA for trying to make homeownership affordable. And if that's the opportunity, our window is now, and we need to be moved forward. I appreciate Habitat for Humanities. I don't know as much as about Land Trust. I think those are all great options, but let's look at other options for them as we move forward with other RFPs. We have, we RFP'd this process. We had decided we wanted to provide homeownership, which is very, very difficult in Oak Park. I also am standing to make sure that we are allowing residents of Oak Park, those that may have fled Oak Park or been pushed out because of costs, have an opportunity to come back and invest in the community. We can do that if we proceed on the course that we have to bring single-family ownership of affordable housing to Oak Park now. So I encourage you to support option one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rose Cabral.
Hello, my name is Rose Cabral, and I live in District Six. I'm one of the founders of the Sacramento Community Land Trust, and I currently serve as co-chair on our board. And so thank you for having this discussion. I gave public testimony back in 2016 requesting the city ensure the land be used for public benefit and remain affordable. Those were different lots, of course. At that time, council members were supportive of the idea, but didn't exactly know what a CLT was or how it worked. So for the past five years, the Sacramento Community Land Trust has put in the work. We have a legal team and a finance team, a diverse board, and collaborations with community land trusts throughout the state and across the country. We have engaged our community. We have listened to our members. We have established trust. We are ready to receive land into the community land trust. I am asking the mayor and council to give us a shot, to take our risk and try something different. If we're going to get out of this affordable housing crisis, we must think differently. I'm also a Realtor, so I can see firsthand what selling these vacant lots does to the market. SHRA sold two lots next to each other in 2017 for $50,000 each. In 2019, a four-bedroom, three-bathroom home was constructed and sold for $440,000. A few months later, the lot next door sold for $459,000. These home sales are now being used as comps for future home sales, further increasing prices in Oak Park and fueling gentrification. If we want to reach, ensure that those remaining lots in Oak Park, that those remaining in Oak Park can actually stay, we need to preserve land affordability now. I ask that you consider transfer of the lots to the Sacramento Community Land Trust to ensure our neighbors can remain in their neighborhood, build generational wealth, and activate the vacant lots. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Cynthia Castillo.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Cynthia Castillo, and I'm a proud board member of the Sacramento Community Land Trust. On behalf of the board and our members, I'd like to urge you to support option two, allowing for the transfer of up to ten North Oak Park vacant lots to the Sacramento Community Land Trust, also known as the SAC CLT. The SAC CLT was created as a vehicle for community land ownership shortly after the council agreed to sell public land to private developers in 2016, as my colleague Rose mentioned earlier. Today, the CLT is a nonprofit community benefit corporation with a governance structure that centers community voices. With dedicated members in each council district, including many in Oak Park, and our partnerships with the California Endowment and Community, Community Vision Capital and Consulting, we have built our capacity to steward the community ownership of housing in Sacramento. The Sacramento CLT is best positioned to ensure that these lots and subsequent homes remain affordable to the local community in perpetuity. We ask that the council place up to ten of the vacant into the SAC CLT, with the requirement that the CLT partner with a nonprofit developer to build the structures. With the SAC CLT retaining ownership of the land, including conditions of sale, that allows the CLT to ensure affordable sale of the property in perpetuity. Too often, affordable homes are lost to relentless appreciation and resale. We were here in 2016, and we urge the council to not make the same mistake in 2022. We cannot squander further opportunity to make Sacramento affordable to the historically discriminated against communities that have called it home for decades. We urge your commitment to tackling the local housing and affordability crisis by partnering with us, the CLT, to build trust between local residents and the city and provide affordability in perpetuity. Regardless, we appreciate being a part of this conversation and look forward to being partners in the future. We're incredibly grateful for you all discussing this critical issue today. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. And our final speaker on this item is Katie Maple.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. Katie Maple, resident of Oak Park and Vice President of Oak Park Neighborhood Association, but not making comments on their behalf today, making comments on my own. I just want to be brief and say that I support and echo the comments of the Sacramento Community Land Trust. As someone who spent a lot of time over the last year talking to residents of the community in Oak Park, I can tell you that the number one issue that people are concerned about is gentrification and displacement. And as I've gotten to know more about the community land trust, I believe that this is one really viable way that we can keep properties and, and housing affordable in the long term for residents, and that's really what we need. As I look in my neighborhood and around the houses, or even, you know, just my neighbor's house. um, or even, you know, just my neighbor's house that's, that's already selling for $200,000 more in the course of a year and a half. I see that we're in, we're in a major crisis in terms of affordability and so I support option two. Um, I think with the caveat that, that um, that it goes to SAC CLT and that they're able to work with an affordable housing developer, a nonprofit one, um, and really looking forward to seeing that, that partnership. Thank you so much.
I have no more speak-
Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Thank you. Let's turn it back to the City Council. There is a motion uh, for option two on the floor. Let me begin with Councilmember Valenzuela Harris and then Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everybody who called in today and to S H R A and Councilmember Shanier for bringing forward this discussion. This does feel like a full circle moment for me because I was one of the founding members of the land trust and we were living, I was organizing in Oak Park in Chase District and we were coming to S H R A meetings about these parcels six years ago, right, to say, wait, don't sell these parcels. Um, let's talk about making them permanently affordable. You know, Scott Zifax uh, was a mentor of mine through that process. And one thing he always told me that I thought was really important is that you can't build more land. You can't build more land. And in a neighborhood like Oak Park that is rapidly gentrifying, where home prices are rapidly increasing, we need to look towards tools that are going to ensure permanent affordability. So here's how a land trust works. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, land trusts are resident led. The biggest bulk of the Sacramento Community Land Trust membership is in Oak Park. Um, they are the ones who help make decisions about design, about long-term use. And, and so when someone buys that home, they're not just buying a home, they're buying into a community that's supporting that home. And through the foreclosure crisis, through all the ups and downs of our market, land trusts across the country that have been in existence for decades have shown they stabilize communities and they stabilize these households. What happens is they separate ownership of the land from the house. So you can still buy the house. This is not just a rental property model, although it can be. This is a model that'll now allow somebody to buy the house. But what it does is instead of selling it to the open market, when they sell the house, they have to sell it back to the trust. So the trust can allow you to build equity. You're still, you're not coming up with zero, you know, you're actually building wealth, but it's not open market wealth. Like as Katie Maple just said, some of the properties in Oak Park are increasing 50% a year in, in equity, and that's not sustainable for anybody. While it may seem like a great income generating opportunity for that resident, they're going to sell their house and not be able to buy another house in Sacramento right now because the market is just growing that quickly. So it enables them to still build equity while that without, um, while preserving the affordability long-term without subsidy. And this is why I made the amendment to the motion around like the proposals that have the deepest affordability for the longest term, because by putting a property into the land trust, you are ensuring affordability forever. Until they sell that property, that property is going to be affordable. And this is a model that they've been working on with the Oakland Land Trust that has acquired many properties in partnership with their city, with the Santa Ana Land Trust, with the South LA Land Trust, with the East LA Land Trust, or Land Trust across the state and the country that the Sacramento Land Trust has worked with. So this isn't a gamble. It's really a matter of why haven't we done this yet in Sacramento? Um, and I think this is a really incredible opportunity for them to partner with the Habitat. So imagine a situation where a land trust partners with the Habitat. The land is in the trust, Habitat does what Habitat does well, which is build the property, bring somebody in who now has this equity. But when that property owner is ready to sell, they're selling it back to the land trust. They're still built their equity at that agreed upon price. They're still building wealth, but they're not selling it to the open market. So they're, they're getting that equity without, and then we're preserving the affordability for the next family. Um, so I think this is one of those um, opportunities that when we think about like anti-displacement and what Oak Park is experiencing, there's a lot of ways land trust can fill that gap. They could come in and buy a property from a homeowner who's in tax risk, who's in risk of losing their property for maintenance challenges. There's been articles, I know Councilman Ruloloie is really passionate about folks who are at risk of losing property because they can't afford to keep up with the maintenance. Imagine if they could sell their property to the land trust, use that money to keep their home, to keep maintaining their home, to do, to keep that equity that they've built. But then when they sell the property, it's going back to the trust, it's going to the next family at a level that they're going to be able to afford, which really ensures the community keeps building and growing. So when I talk about deepest and longest affordability, what I'm hoping from S H R A is getting from that is that applications that partner with the land trust are going to get priority because those are definitely going to be longer term affordability than anything else. What I also hope is that we work really hard in this process to make it more accessible. Something in 2016 and 17, when these properties were released, we actually tried to partner with Nehemiah to apply for several of these properties. It was something that Scott was willing to do for us back then, five years ago, before we had any of the infrastructure that they have now. And we couldn't, we found that we couldn't because at the time S H R A was requiring site level drawings, finance documents, a whole list of things that makes sense down the line, but at that time in a two-month window over December was not something that we were able to do. And, and we basically said, gosh, this is all we did for the whole application window. We'd never be able to meet that threshold. And so I want us to make sure that we're really proactively figuring out, how do we use this property to the highest and best use? And I do believe that partnership with the land trust is an important part of that, and it would really ensure that this land and the investment we've made in acquiring and maintaining the land goes as far as it possibly can. So I'll defer, happy to answer any questions you have about land trust. By the way, I'm a land trust savant at this point, six years into the process, but I'm really proud of them for calling in. And I hope you see the energy that they spent submitting comments and calling into this meeting is evidence. You saw letters from the Oakland Land Trust that they're going to help. You see letters from people who are saying, we are willing to help and take this step. And if it works, which I think it will, it will give us a tool that will help prevent displacement across the city, which would be really incredible. So thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Harris, then Jennings and Lolo.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd just like to say that I appreciate Leah Miller calling in. I think Habitat for Humanity would be a great developer for these projects. I have one question for either Jay or LaShaw. Would, under what aspect or what developer would, would prevailing wage be triggered on the, on these properties?
Oh, LaShaw, you want to answer that or you want me to?
You, you can go ahead.
I mean, basically, they're, they're, the, it's coming from the city which triggers prevailing wage. Um, Habitat is, I think, the only affordable developer that is um, exempted from, from minimum wage because of the sweat equity part that they do.
Not, not minimum wage, you meant prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage, I, I apologize. So, so Habitat in the conversations we've had and, you know, this is an RFP, hopefully that people will have to compete for, can basically build the houses at half the price that others can.
Yeah, well, for that reason-
Prevailing wage and, and sweat equity.
Yeah, well, I, I believe in the Habitat model and if this goes to prevailing wage, then affordability is not going to be attained. So I think they're a tremendous developer and a really good fit for this.
There's any kind of subsidy.
Um, just to clarify, in terms of these particular lots, the prevailing wage would be triggered if there is a type of subsidy or funding source that we put in that um, requires that, for instance, if we put some federal funding in to help subsidize it, then those are the types of things that would trigger um, prevailing wage.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the lots as well, LaShaw? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, the lots in and of themselves would not.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jennings, Councilmember Jennings.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You know, all these are interesting models and uh, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to listen and learn from my colleagues. Uh, but I'm also trying to see how do we keep going, what we had going when we were talking about DPH doing this and making this happen. The Habitat for Humanity, you know, they do great work. I, I've seen them work and they're great partners. Their model works. Um, my, my questions would be, you know, have they done multi-unit housing ownership projects before? Um, I'd like to know how they're going to secure funding for the 10 homes. You know, how will they fund this project? Uh, what will their phasing look like? Um, and I also realize that Habitat for Humanity is currently working on 18 homes in the county. So do they have capacity to take one more than they have right now? So um, Habitat Humanity requires 500 hours of sweat equity. Um, so I don't know how you pick your families in situations like that. Uh, what, what, what I'm trying to do is get back to what we started with and trying to get to the model that we started with. And it looks like option one with S H R A still doing this allows us to see all these houses built by 2024. Um, and in these houses being built, you don't have a glorified rental situation sometimes, but you do provide stability and opportunity to build equity, to, to be able to send your child to college, to be able to start a business or take a vacation or remodel your home for the whatever, you know, purpose um, that you need done in order to have more room or more space. Um, we've been trying to train for ownership and I'd like to keep that going. I mean, we've been on this train for ownership and I'd like to keep it going. I don't want to stop that and move to another model where you don't have the kind of ownership that all of us expect to have in our own homes. So um, I want to get back to the model. So I'm, I'm, I'm supporting option one. You know, I trust S H R A, I know the work that they do. We've been on this train way too long. We've, we've, we've had too many delays and, and I don't want to continue to do that where you find developers, they can't find workers, they can't get the project done, and then that takes a community like Oak Park and continues to keep them behind. And so he or she who is behind in the great race of life must forever remain behind if nobody's ever going to help them to run faster. I'm not interested in doing that. I'm interested in keeping this mo- this model going forward. And I trust S H R A because they've done everything we've ever asked them to do. So I want to move forward with the S H R A model. Option one.
Okay, Councilmember Lolo, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Um, I just want to make sure, um, I have a question about the land trust. Um, so when somebody purchases the, the, the house, if they want to sell it, they can only sell it back to the, to the land trust committee if Councilmember-
That's correct.
So if they're buying a property, let's say for 470, and in five years from now, the market rate for that house is 750,000, that's how much they can sell it to the um, land trust for the, the market rate of that time? Or it has to be the same price that they purchased?
It does not have to be the same price, but it's not market rate. So what you enter into in terms of a contract is an agreement about equity that's built. And it's a guaranteed payment price. So the same works if equity decreases. So what we saw in the recession, for example, is a lot of people lost the value in their home. Well, a land trust property, that's still the agreement that we're going to buy that. Say they said now it's worth 450,000 because we agreed you had it for five years and we agreed at X percentage growth each year. We're buying it from you from that. And I say we, I'm not on the board anymore, but that's what they would get as sort of a guaranteed investment. I know it seems right now that housing is a guaranteed investment because the market is going up so high so quickly. Um, but we also all know that that might not be the case, and this is a little bit more assurance.
And with that program, can I, can they um, use the house as a collateral to borrow against it from a bank?
Yeah, absolutely. It works just like any other homeownership model. And so it's exactly the way that you own your home today is that, you know, you'd be able to borrow again, so you can do anything you want with it. The only thing you can't do is just sell it to anybody because the land still belongs to the trust.
So the whole deed will be under the, the residence name? The land trust will not be anywhere on the deed um, or anywhere recorded within the county?
Correct. I think it's kind of like, you know, when you join a homeowners association, right? I think that's kind of like the closest analogy, although I don't really like it because it functions differently. Like there's certain things you can't do with your home, um, even though you own your home, and that's similar in the way that a land trust works.
Thank you.
So just to, uh, as a point of clarification in terms of if we um, proceed and sell the homes at the 110% AMI, because that's what the $479,000 is at, 479,000. That homeowner can sell at a future date to someone else only at that level of affordability. So the affordability is built into the process. So if, let's say it's 479 is where 110% AMI is at now, and I sell it in 10 years and the 110% AMI will dictate the price. So it's not whatever the market can bear, it's whatever that affordability is. So hypothetically, let's say in 10 years, it's at 525,000. Then that's the max that they can sell the house for, and that's how the affordability works on this particular situation. In terms of the community land trust, what we would have to do is to take a look at what proposals that we receive, um, how they're structured in terms of they're either, they're coming in alone or they're coming in with another partner for capacity, and then how they're going to work within those restrictions, and those are things we'd work out.
Yeah, and I think there's, I appreciate that because I mean, it could go, I mean, the value of the home essentially could go up or it could go down based on AMI, right? And so for how long would that restriction be in place on, on a home that was built? I think, is there a certain number of years that it would be in effect or would it be forever?
Forty-five years.
Okay, so I mean, that's one of the other big distinctions, I think, between a land trust and the traditional model is that it stays forever. There, there is no time limit on that, you know, as long as the land trust owns the property, that's, that's the restriction that's, that's in place. And so I guess it's just, it is new, right? And, and I get that this is something that a lot of folks are like, this feels crazy. We want to build equity. We want to move quickly. This doesn't have to slow anybody down. This doesn't have to be anything different. It's just an additional layer on top of our existing infrastructure that preserves the subsidy longer than we might necessarily have under the current structure. And it's something that works really well. So some of you may have followed Moms for Housing in Oakland. Uh, when there were moms in Oakland that had occupied a vacant house and they eventually bought that house, they bought that house in partnership with the City of Oakland through the Oakland Community Land Trust. And that was not just an open sale. They bought it through the land trust and now those moms are living in that house, they're building equity in that house. And when they decide to sell that house, it's going to go to another community member that needs that affordability and they're going to be able to take that equity with them. So it's different. I get that. But I think what we're experiencing in Sacramento with housing, part of my own frustration is that I feel like there's all these best practices just an hour away from us that we're not implementing yet here. And I think it could provide some really great opportunity for us to learn from what's working just to the west of us and to try it here in Sacramento, especially as we're feeling a lot of that housing pressure coming to us from the Bay. So um, that's, that's just a little bit more editorializing. Thank you for indulging.
Thank you. Jay, Councilmember.
If Jeff wants to speak, I, I'd like to close.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a comment too and then I'll let you close, okay?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Hey, Katie, a couple of questions. You say that people can build equity and I take it they build equity by making payments, but what about appreciation? Are you saying that the land trust negotiates at the beginning deal, what the selling price would be eventually, whenever they decide to sell? I mean, what happens to the appreciation value?
Yes, so it doesn't just freeze. Um, and so there is an agreement going in on the sale price of the property and on what that level of growth will be over time, is, is my understanding from working with Oakland Land Trust.
So if there is appreciation, then the affordability may or may not be there at some point in the future.
Well, it's appreciation below market, right? So it's like, you know, if we say like, let's say, for example, you're going to get 5% a year appreciation, right? Like that's still growth, it's still building equity, it's not doing what's currently happening in Oak Park, which is almost in some cases literally 50% a year. So it is still a sale price that is below market growth. Um, and it's preserving that, guaranteeing that price for that homeowner so they know their investment is going to pay off for them when they're ready to move on.
So i- if prices went down, how would the land trust have the financial stature to take the loss?
The land trust owns, well, this is a definite nice level of fin- financing. I know Steve from the Oakland Land Trust couldn't be on the call today and he's much more equipped to answer these technical questions. All I can tell you is this is not a new model. I'm not a finance person. This has existed for decades around the country and for decades around the country. That is how it works. Um, the financing is such a way that we're not banking on that market growth and we're banking on knowing that we're going to have to pay that property value when, when it's sold.
Well, if you would be so kind, connect me with that financier in Oakland so that I can get my questions answered.
Happily.
I definitely want to manage expectations here, and I know that we are talking about community um, land trusts, but really the, the regulatory agreement, the deed that's on this property that we are, we have to honor um, is based on how we purchase the funds and we purchase these with redevelopment funds. So that's really going to dictate in terms of that level of affordability. So what we'll be looking for in the RFP is how do they overlay their process with the requirements that we have to follow.
Thank you for that, LaShaw. That, that really helps clarify.
Thank you, Jeff. So, you know, this morning we had a two-hour uh, meeting of the City Council's uh, racial equity committee. And it was a very interesting discussion and the thing that struck me from the public testimony and from the community members helping lead this initiative is this constant reminder that um, invest in them and invest in some of their ideas and some of their innovations. And I heard my friend Councilmember Jennings talk about S H R A. We're very lucky to have S H R A. I see that. I know sometimes we've had disagreements over the years. I think we've got a great expert agency that does great work. That doesn't mean that all of the work should always be centered on them. Um, that we ought to take an opportunity to try some different things. I'm always reminded about, you know, the advice that we would all give to our own kids about finances. Diversify, diversify your strategies. Um, especially when we have such a crisis. And that's why we do have such a multiplicity and a variety of housing strategies that are going on with S H R A in the lead for, for most of them, and that's a good thing. But this is an opportunity to say, look, um, the, Rick Jennings talks about the train. No fault of S H R As, but the fact of the matter, we've tried this one way now for six years and we haven't produced the, the, the product and the housing for the people. And now there's a new offer that is not uh, way out there. It has a foundation and uh, and a track record. It has a foundation and, uh, a, a, and a track record. I think we got to do this. I think we got to do this and we got to try it. And then we're combining the best of our agency's expertise with the strengths of the community. And that formula is always better than, you know, too much one or, or too much the other. I'm in favor of option two. Councilman Schneer?
Mayor, can I chime in before Councilmember Schneer, uh?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Is that okay, Jay?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I guess I just want to say that it's like a good problem to have. That we're trying to figure out who's going to develop the land. We all want to develop the land. We're trying to figure out how to get the land to people in Oak Park, that we want more homeowners in Oak Park, that we want to do affordable housing in Oak Park. So I'm, I'm kind of just glad that the decision is how do we do that and not do we want to do that or we don't have the resources. So I wanted to chime in and say that. Then I would also just say, I'll support whichever route everyone wants to go. So I'm going to vote yes on whichever motion comes first. And then if that doesn't pass, I'll vote on the other one because I just want to see this get out there to the people in Oak Park and see the houses get built. If it were me, I would lean harder on S H R A. Because in my experience on this dais, um, my best results have come when I partnered with S H R A. But they are very busy. We are asking a lot of them. So if the council member for the district thinks that he wants to try something different, then, then we should just try it. Because, you know, uh, it's not going to hurt anything if the RFPs come back non-responsive or don't meet the qualifications that S H R A needs to address the, how the land was purchased, then she'll let us know and we'll, we can try something different. But, um, I think this is a good problem to have. I just want to say that I think S H R A does an amazing job. I'm sure they would do a great job if we left them in charge of this project. And I'm sure it would come to fruition and be amazing. If you want to try something different, I, I don't see a problem with that either. So Councilmember Schneer, I believe that you are going to be first up and I'll support that motion. So I haven't heard another one.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, a couple of things. First of all, LaShelle, I want to thank you and, and S H R A, um, for being open to even this discussion. And I think it's important. Um, you know, we, we, and I'm going to repeat some of the things the mayor said, but we, we have a housing crisis. We have an affordable housing crisis. And, you know, i- if we're spending five or six hundred thousand dollars a door, and that's the only way we're doing it, it's just not going to work over time. We will never get there from here. Um, we have to be creative and we have to look at different types of, of modules that we're building, whether it's tiny homes, whether it's the Kind project, uh, that's going on in, in West Sacramento at a hundred and thirty thousand a door. Um, whether it's, um, something that for Habitat that they can sell for two hundred and fifty thousand versus four hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars if we're doing it ourselves. Um, so I, I think we do need to experiment. I want to make sure people understand. Um, part of my motion here is that it does not have to be one developer. Um, so I, I would be excited if, if, uh, the land trust can, uh, partner up with a developer and come in. Um, and we can try it, um, and see what works. I think, I, I don't know if they've ever actually built something. I don't know what their assets or capacity is. But that's something I would look forward to, to learning about, uh, through this. So, you know, if it's, if it's a, a smaller number of units that they want to do or even apply for 10, I think that's great. Um, Habitat, same thing. If they can build these things for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece, bring in folks at thirty to eighty percent AMI, uh, that's a huge win for, for those folks who, who are there. Um, so with the RFP, just to repeat, and LaShelle, um, I, I'd want to prioritize financial feasibility, depth of affordability, which I think gets to what Katie was talking about, and, and timing. How quickly can we do these? And again, if we have two developers or three at the most, um, it's going to be much quicker. I think that we don't want S H R A having to negotiate contracts with too many developers. But if we can get a few and get these things built, I mean, we, we've been waiting a long time to do that. Um, also, uh, just want to note the 1.5 million that S H R A is beside for this. That would be used as a, um, that would be used as a subsidy, however we do this. Um, I, I would leave it to S H R A to figure out how that works and how that, how that makes it workable. But that would be part of the RFP that people would apply for. Um, so with that, uh, I'd like to move this item, um, get it off our dais and hopefully back into the community. And I would love to see some community members, I've had contact, uh, through someone else with two of them who would be interested as well, um, to see if we can get, get them involved as well. So land trust, habitat, community, all wins. So that's my motion.
Right, and it has been seconded by Councilmember Valenzuela. Councilmember Jennings, do you have one final comment?
Yeah, I, I, I actually want to try to get to a solution that Jay is moving plus two. But I want to create a substitute motion that I think will create a better win-win-win situation, um, than the one that's on the table right now. So I want to put a substitute motion on the table that allows S H R A to start with the three that they were going to start on and put the RFP out for the remaining properties, uh, and then we see what we get. And if in fact they don't come through because of labor shortages or not having the capacity, then we make another decision at that point in time. But I want to put that substitute motion on, on the table and see if there's a second port.
Rick, let me ask you a question. What, what if we flip that around and say, if we don't get enough interest locally, then S H R A steps in?
Well, we know we can do that. I agree. That, that's always an option. But I think right now I have a sense of urgency, Jay. I want to get this done and I don't want to wait on the process. And so S H R A, and we can have Ms. Dozier speak. S H R A is ready to start this construction of the three. We can get that done and we can move forward.
Is there a second on the substitute motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, let us call the roll then on the substitute motion. I assume Councilmember Schneer, you're calling for a, a no vote on the substitute.
Correct.
Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor, I, a quick question. The 1.5 million subsidy, if that is injected in this project, if we go with option two, would that kicking prevable wages?
A direct subsidy would in fact, uh, mean prevailing wage, correct?
It depends on the, the funding source.
Depends on the funding.
There, there is an, I ask is, uh, Jay, you indicated that there's a 1.5 million dollars through S H R A that is set aside to help with this project. So let's hypothetically assume that, um, another developer, option two, they come in and we utilize that 1.5 as a, as a subsidy for a project. Would that, uh, activate prevable wages?
Again, it's, uh, I think as LaShelle said, it would depend where, where those funds came from. I'm, I'm not sure where they are. Um, I think it's up to anyone answering the RFP, um, to say, we need this fund, these funds, or we don't need these funds.
Because that would change the, the cost of the build out.
Absolutely.
Ultimately, so we.
But they, they have to figure that out into their pro forma in an RFP.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, what we talked about, oh, okay, never mind.
Well, I mean, you know, when, when your explanation totally makes sense, option two, lower cost, therefore much more affordable. But if that get, that 1.5 gets activated with an option to be as attractive looking as we're discussing right now.
So the conversation, we talked about a lot about CLT. I'm assuming that they could get around that. Um, I, I would ask Katie to, to speak to that. With Habitat, as, as I said, they can build these for a hundred, for two hundred and fifty thousand each. They would try to get a, a Cal Home, uh, grant of a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand subsidy from the city and fifty thousand in sweat equity. And they're off and running. It's half the price of what, what we could do as an agency.
Thank you.
And to answer your question, Jay, and just to be super clear, this is not CLT or an organization like Habitat. They'd be working with somebody like Habitat. So the way Habitat would be able to pay for it would be the same. Like the CLT is just an additional layer into that process.
Right. And Habitat, as I was just reminded, which we said before, is not subject to prevailing wage because of the sweat equity piece. So, um, I don't think that can be touched.
Could I ask a quick follow-up question before you call this mayor, um, to LaShelle? It's just, so if, if you build the properties, what you were saying in your presentation is that the sale price would probably be four hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars. It wouldn't necessarily be lower because you'd always already be using some funding to help make that work.
It's, it would be four, four hundred and seventy because it can go up to a hundred and ten thousand, um, a hundred and ten percent AMI. Unless the city decided that they wanted to subsidize that to a lower level. So if you wanted to see someone, let's say at eighty percent AMI, the city could do that and provide more resources to buy it down to that amount.
Okay, that's like what we were saying, right?
Obviously, an opportunity cost for us using those funds.
Right.
Sorry.
There's always.
Councilmember, Councilmember Getta, Councilmember Getta had a comment or a question?
Yeah, I have a question here, you know, uh, and then maybe this is for either Rick or for LaShelle. So here, uh, my concern, I think, with the motion of having three being done by S H R A is I think that, one, it, as I understand, the, the first motion that Jay put together, I know it's an RFP process that allows either the sale of one or all or a multiple of, of projects. So I guess, I guess my concern here is with the substitute motion, we are essentially cutting out three of those properties out. And there may be an applicant who would say, look, we, we can benefit by reducing the cost, uh, and the final sale cost by putting a proposal that has all or a, a higher number. So I guess my concern is, would an applicant then be restricted with the substitute motion? Because we're basically saying, we're going to save these three at a higher cost and then allow another group. So either, either Rick or LaShelle, if you could answer that. Because I guess my concern about the substitute motion is it limits our options to see what are best mac, what are best options to be, because that's what the RFP process is out. It's supposed to find our best possible options. So if someone can discuss that, that, that would help.
Councilmember, did you want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead. Please.
So in the, in the option, if S H R A, um, were to move forward, if you approved this, um, particular substitute motion, um, because we already have the plans, we already have everything laid out, we would be moving towards construction, um, relatively quickly. Um, and then the proceeds from those homes then could be used as a part of this RFP that you're going to do for the other lots. Um, and then we would see exactly what we get out of the RFP. We would know that before we even finish these homes. That would have been concluded. So that would be the difference, um, between we RFP or we get started on some and then RFP the, the remaining lots.
So we still have a second vote at the apple? Is that what you're saying? That we can still see whether what, you know, fair out, what, what, which options are best priced? Or, or as you understand the motion, we're going forward with these first three immediately and then we're going to go with the rest of the property.
I didn't make the motion, so Councilmember Jennings, I, I'm, I don't want to speak for you in terms of what your intent was.
Yeah, my intent is to start with three to get it moving and get this going forward. You just brought up a great point that we would know exactly, uh, what additional money we would have to be able to do what we would like to do with. I don't think, Eric, that it makes a significant difference to a developer, whether he starts with 10 or whether he starts with 13. I don't think there's a, a price significant to 10 versus 13. That's a large number either way you go.
Yeah, I, I just want to make the point, I'm sorry, that, you know, we're potentially putting three families in a four hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and seventy nine thousand price point or three families in a two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar price point.
Let's call the roll on the substitute motion, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloey?
This is Councilmember Jennings, substitute, uh, motion versus.
Correct.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Councilmember Schneer?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Getta?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
No. The motion, uh, substitute motion is defeated. Please call the roll on the main motion.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloey?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Getta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, that passes, uh, eight to one. Thank you all very much for a good, good debate, good discussion. Let's, uh, let's build. All right. Vice Mayor, would you mind that taking the rest of the meeting, uh, for me? Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I cut out for a second. Can you?
No, I was just gonna, I was just asking if you could take the rest of the meeting.
Oh, sure. Yes, absolutely. You got it.
Thank, thank you so much.
You got it. Okay, sorry, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor, I have two hands raised to make public comment for matters not on the agenda.
Yep, go ahead and call the first person.
First one is a phone number, last four digits, four, three, six, six. Mr. Davis?
Yes, this is Lambert, and I, I wanted to say, um, I see the mayor is gone, but I, he can listen to it later. But I was glad that he mentioned, anytime it's talking about race and equity, I feel real comfortable that he's involved as well as City Councilwoman, uh, Mai Vang, and I guess now Mr. Jennings. Because you're going to have to have a well-balanced approach to this because there's tremendous resistance to race and equity at City Hall. It's been well documented. I also wanted to say that you need more people like, I hope I pronounced her name correctly, LaShelle Dozier. Because if you notice, anytime she's asked a question, I'm talking about just her, she has the answer. Whereas if you take some members of, of, uh, City Hall and you ask them a question, they'll always say, well, and I'm not talking about the city council and I'm not talking about the mayor. I'm talking about some staff members. They won't have the answer, but yet they're well-paid to have the answer. So it's refreshing to see that competency. And so I wanted to, to emphasize that. And I also wanted to say last week, at the end of the long night, I had my hand up and I never was allowed in. So I'm going to blame that on a technical situation because I'm definitely pro Mindy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Nikki.
Hi, everybody. This is Nikki. Um, I'm calling, uh, you know, I'm with the Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee. And I'm calling really concerned. I know that yesterday there was a meeting held with some advocates and some, and a lawyer, um, uh, you know, trying to work some of this stuff out about the large encampment, uh, sweeps of RVs. And I want to say, we know it's a, you know, commerce circle, Lexington, Evergreen. People are being chased around town, but it's not just happening there. It's happening all over Sacramento. I just spoke with a woman who was in the South area, uh, who had her trailer taken. It was the, the first shelter she'd had in quite a long time. Um, I, I want to recognize that even as these conversations are happening today, code is out there at Evergreen harassing folks to leave. The SAC PD is out there telling them they have to leave. They've been given a soft deadline of Thursday after a deadline of Monday. They're being just constantly harassed. And these are folks, these are elderly folks, disabled folks, families. Uh, whatever Jeff Harris might want to say about criminal enterprise, this, this harassment and this taking of people's uh, very last shelter, privacy and stability. Um, it's, it's torture, it's collective punishment. Even if you think there is something going on there, why aren't the police handling that in the way that, that they're supposed to? Why is this instead being taken out on everybody in these spaces? And I want to recognize also that folks who are in this situation, who actually have RVs, are some of these newly, uh, experiencing homelessness, uh, individuals and families who really just need that prevention and intervention support early on. And, and this code operation is the opposite of that. Um, people are not being provided other options. People are being scattered across the city. And I, I. And I I I know that it it seems like, oh, there's not a lot of control over that. But you certainly can set direction for your city manager's office.
Comments, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, these people need support. They don't need to be swept, and it's happening now, as we talk.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, no more.
Okay, is there anything else on the agenda? Any council comments? I don't see any hands. Madam Clerk, do you see any hands?
Vice Maricino, hands raised.
All right, then we will reconvene at what time?
Four o'clock.
You have, you have a closed session at four o'clock, regular meeting at five.
All right, thank you. See you all soon.